Hello everyone and welcome to another edition of the Ask Bill Keegan Show. My name is Bill Keegan, Town Manager at Foxborough. And the topic of today's show is a review of the annual town meeting warrant, which the town meeting will be held on Monday, May 11th, at the Foxborough High School, starting at 7:30 PM. My guests today are Mary Beth Bernard, Assistant Town Manager, and Randy Scollins, Director of Finance for the town of Foxborough. Mary Beth and Randy, welcome. Welcome to the show.
Thank you, Bill.
Glad to have you here today. On top, on tap for the May 11th Town Meeting warrant, we'll be, we'll be having about 24 articles that we'll want to go through and to consider for action at that meeting. We want to take this opportunity from the show today to briefly describe the articles under the consideration for everyone at the meeting, and the key points that have been the focus of discussion for both the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee up until now. We've been working on this process, starting back in November, and actually, we've been, and it's been, obviously, about a six-month process. And so, this is not something that we take lightly. It's a lot of work that goes into this process. And so, I really want to thank, first of all, thank both of you, because you played an instrumental, instrumental role in putting this document together. But also, a lot of things goes out to the Advisory Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, Planning Board, and all the department heads and various town boards and committees who have actually played an important role in putting this document together. Many, many people don't realize that this process takes such a long period of time, but a lot of time, effort, time and effort goes into development of the, of the annual town meeting process. Obviously, this process is well-defined, it's well, well-thought-out, and strategically-directed to purposes of trying to develop the best actions for our community to consider during this annual town meeting process. However, this year, we actually did some things a little bit different. We, we saw some things, made some observations during the special town meeting process that's happened this past November, and made a couple changes in the process. And Mary Beth, if you'd like, maybe, to spend a few minutes talking about the process that took place.
Sure. Thanks, Bill. So, after receiving feedback after the special fall town meeting about the way articles came through our office, through the Board of Selectmen, and then through the AdCom, we decided to take a look at, another look at it. We developed a schedule that every time we would put it on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen, we would ask each of the sponsors of the articles to present them to our office. We would then list them on a spreadsheet. We're a new team, between Bill being here a year, myself six months, we had Marcia, our new executive assistant, and then a new town council. So, it was a good opportunity to sort of look at the process. So, sponsors would submit the articles to us. We would vet the language through the certain experts, town council, the financial ones, we're all through Randy. And then, we would discuss them with the board every week. And what we would bring is this document, which is like a calendar. And the board would discuss the document, discuss them. We would come back very often, need more information, other things were pending, you know, union negotiations and such. So, and then, other things we decided we would preserve, because it just wasn't the right time to bring them forward. And then, the Board of Selectmen would make a recommendation and would bring them to AdCom. They would get vetted through AdCom, and then, that's how they ended up here on the warrant.
In the final document. So, from start to finish, there was probably no less than a half a dozen versions of this process.
Oh, at least.
So, obviously, it was, you know, we were concerned about making sure that we, whatever documentation that we had was the most consistent information we had, and also, that the, each of the boards had the most up-to-date information that we had available. This is not different than any other place. I mean, this is really consistent, it's sort of like, I think you described it as being making the sausage, where all the different pieces go into it, and at the end, we ultimately have, have something that's, that's actually a good product. So, we, so then, we, but we go through that process annually, we go through the same, a similar-type process for the special town meeting, but it doesn't take as long, because it's maybe not as many articles to consider. By and large, this is not a large warrant. It's not, I don't, there's not a lot of controversial issues on this warrant. It's, it's pretty benign in many ways. Obviously, there's important issues on here, but, so I don't want to take away from that. But, but in terms of the level of concern that I think have been generated of articles, I haven't seen that generated as much in this particular process. So, without further ado and delay, let's get, go through the warrant and provide residents with some of the key considerations that will be made on, on May 11th. So, the first three articles are the annual town elections, and the first, and the second one is the annual town reports, and the third is reports of committees. Those are, those are standard articles for consideration in the, in the process. Every year, these, these articles are considered as, as automatic articles for consideration. In Article One, there are a couple elections going on this year for, for various positions. There are, there are two, there is one vacancy, or actually, there was, there were votes for, for two selectmen for three years on the Board of Selectmen, there was three candidates for those, those two positions. The assessors for, for three years, two school committee members for three years, one school committee member for one year, one water and sewer commissioner for three years, one Board of Health member for three years, two Boyd and Library trustees for three years, two planning board members for three years, and one housing authority member for five years, and one housing authority member for four years. And, and there's also a question about this year, which was actually discussed fairly extensively throughout the community this past year, and that was, shall the town vote to accept revisions of Section 19B of Chapter 41 of the general laws and thereby provide permanent tenure for Robert E. Cutler Jr., who is the present sitting town clerk, for the present incumbent in the office, and for that, for that position? And that is the question that's before the residents, and that will be acted on, on May 4th, which is a week from, a week, a week prior to the town meeting. So, we'll have those results, and then, we'll see where, where it goes from there. Interesting enough that the Advisory Committee actually heard the, the presentation on the town clerk tenure question, and they did recommend the, the support of that. So, so, just so the residents are aware of that as well. So, the second is, is the report of the town offices and act thereon, that is the town reports. And to be honest, that process has gone very, very well. We, we will have those documents available, the annual town report will be available for the election day, which is May 4th. And then, Article Third, Article Three is to hear the report of any committee to act upon, to choose any committee. We're not aware of any committee reports at this present time, though there always are a few that, that do come up during the period during, prior to the meeting, and usually, those are presented to the town moderator, who will then present those at town meeting. So, then, we get into the, the operating budget in Article Four, which is the, the major financial document for the year. And Randy, maybe you can touch upon some of the, the key points of the budget.
Sure. Thanks, Bill. The high points are the total operating budget, which is Article Four, but also, including all of the, the costs of the proposed contractual articles that are on here as well, and as well as contracts that are not yet settled. So, the number that I'll speak about here actually speaks to all of that. So, it's all-inclusive, so we're not parsing out, you know, parsing out pieces. So, this, the number I'll speak about here is slightly higher than the number you see in Article Four by about 700,000. But, the, the budget, the operating budget this year comes in at just under $66 million, 65,950,000, all in, all contracts, all unsettled contracts. That's up about 3.3 million from last year, or 5.27%. That includes the enterprise accounts as well. And the, the primary drivers here, or the, the school department, is up 4% or 1.2 million. The municipal departments are up 4.7% for their recurring costs, and then, an incremental 3% for what are either one-time costs, or they're supported by, by new funding. And the key drivers of that would be the fire reorganization, which is fully funded by ambulance receipts at about 200,000.
Not taxation, which is an important.
Exactly. And it's, this is a, we find ourselves in a very unique and positive space here, where the ambulance program run by the fire department is, is generating a significant amount of revenue for the town. It's allowed, in the past, the fire department to fully fund every piece of equipment that is needed by the fire department. It's always contributed a significant amount towards their operating budget. And now, given that the ambulance receipts are, are up significantly, and are sustaining this level, we're able to support the reorganization of the fire department with, with increased commitment from ambulance receipts, and we feel very comfortable that this is sustainable. So, that, that would, tends to skew the increase on the, on the municipal side, but there was a major reorganization there. In addition to the establishment of the new municipal building department as well, so we've consolidated with the, with the school department, effective officially July 1st, even though they're already helping us out. There's an additional maintenance worker who'll be added. And then, the facilities director will also be compensated partially by the town for overseeing the town. And then, in order to ensure that they have something to work with to maintain the buildings, because that is the goal, we've added some extra dollars in there as well, so we have a building fund to work with. So, all of that was incremental, 170,000. And then, another 80,000 was added in for veterans' benefits, because the Veterans Director is doing a phenomenal job finding people who are eligible for these benefits, and so, we're finding the need to increase the budget for next year. You'll see a budget adjustment article for this year. Good news is, is that about 75% of that does come back to us through the state reimbursement. So, that's the municipal department. And then, fixed costs are up, which is our insurances and our, and our debt, those types of things.
Pension costs.
Exactly. Pension are up about 5.3% or, you know, 1.1 million. I'm sorry, the municipal departments are up 1.1 million, my mistake. Fixed costs are up about 700,000, and 440,000 associated with health, and 290,000 associated with pension. But, those are, those are the key drivers that, that drive all the, and enterprise expenses are up about 6.5% as well.
Great. Well, thank you, that, thank you for that recap. That's, it's a, it's a pretty complex document, obviously, a lot of work has gone into that, and I appreciate all the, the work that you did, as well as the efforts from all the various town departments who put time into this document. There were a lot of decision points that had to be made along the way. Final, final decision points were made in recommending the final budget back about a month ago. You and I sat down and, and, and worked on those final decisions. There were more things that I wanted to do with this budget than, than I could have done, but obviously, we didn't have the funding to do that. We're trying to balance the revenues with the, the needs of what the organization really, really should be doing. And I, my, my opinion, my, my observation over the past year is that we're, we're pretty thin across most operations, and that, and that while, you know, I'd love to be able to add additional personnel and, and individuals to various departments, we simply can't afford to do that. And so, we're going to continue to work with what we have, and to, and to have a long-term sustainable budget, because I, we, we recognize that the concerns of citizens, that we don't want to continue to raise taxes, you know, you know, with a, with a much higher rate every single year. We want to try and keep things affordable and maintainable, but, but.
I was just going to say, I think it's, it's important for folks to understand what we fully understand, which is, we're not just looking at next year's budget, we're looking at the year after and the year after that, as we're planning long-term to accomplish a goal that we had set out to accomplish quite some time ago, which, which is pretty aggressive, and that was to fund the next major building project within the operating budget, without going for a debt exclusion, without asking for increase in taxes. And so, that, we've been successful in, in reserving that amount of budget capacity over the last three years, and now, this will be the fourth year. And that does put downward pressure on spending, but that's, these are the tough decisions that, that you, Bill, and the policy boards have to make. It's just a balance, not just the operating budget requests for service levels, but also the capital budget, and the long-term liabilities, and the, and the, how we pay for, for new buildings. And so, this was one where we're trying to do the best thing we possibly could do for the taxpayer, and, and not raise taxes for the next building project.
All right. I appreciate you, you explained that, because clearly, we hear what the public wants. Everybody wants more, but they're, they're not always willing to, to pay for that. And I, and we understand that. So, and we're trying to balance the needs with, with the ability to pay. And over the long term, that's, that's really what we hope we'll be able to, be able to do. And I think we will. I mean, I think we have a good strategic plan in place, and I think that the discussions and the long-term, the long-term planning that goes into that is, is actually quite helpful. So, thank you for going through that. The next, next article, Article Five, is, is a discussion of the capital process, which I, it was my first time going through that capital process here. I thought it was very well-done. There's a, there's a subcommittee of, of individuals that works on that committee, and we meet on a Saturday, go through all the articles, all the requests that are made from the various town departments, and then, we make decisions based upon what we can afford. And in the end, I think we came up with a recommendation that is, is good for everyone. We actually want to thank Roger Hill and Department of Public Works for, for actually foregoing some of their needs, and Roger sticks on the committee, so for him to, to say, "I'm going to hold off on one of my major requests so I can fund other departments", was, was very commendable on his part, and at the same time, was able to address some really important, important issues. Randy, you want to speak a little more about that?
Sure. That was, I, I love this committee, this CIP committee, it's my favorite committee, because it's, it takes a tremendous amount of budgetary requests for capital, and condenses it down into, in essence, a morning, and that's with full presentation, full deliberation. And yes, what, what Roger did there was, was incredible, and what we typically see from, from Roger and everybody on the committee, is if they can help out and, and see the need for another priority going above, above theirs, they, they will do what they can to, to make that happen. And Roger did that in this case, to ensure that there was funding for, in this case, the, the lights at the, at the, at the turf field, as opposed to replacing a couple of vehicles this year. So, that was, that was really good.
Good to see that. So, thank you. So, Article Five is the capital items. Article Six, Mary Beth, can you speak to that? That's the issue on seasonal pay and non-union managerial pay, pay plan?
Before I jump into that, I'd be remiss if I didn't commend Randy on the budget process. This was my first go-around in something like this, and he made it so, look so easy, it's so complicated, with a calendar that is presented to everyone, so they know the timeline, and with deliverables for everyone, and then, those one-on-one depart, the meetings with Bill and I, and yourself and the departments, to understand their budgets. It was, the transparency's incredible, and good job.
Thank you. It's, you had said, Mary Beth, earlier about, you know, how we have a, we have a refreshed team here. I feel refreshed with this refreshed team as well. It's really, it's really great to be, be part of this team. I'm really enjoying it.
Well, thank you.
So, Article Six.
Article Six.
Non-union managerial seasonal pay plan.
Yes. This, this usually appears as the Personnel Bylaw article, and because this year, we're looking at refreshing a lot of the policy issues in the Personnel Bylaw, and we have some pending labor negotiations going on, we decided that for the voters, we would be putting to get, putting forth the non-union management pay plan at this point, and holding off on the bylaw policy changes, probably until the special town meeting. We're looking at like 22 policies, revising them all. The Personnel Wage Board is back together and going strong, and been extremely helpful in looking at each and every piece of the bylaw. So, more exciting stuff to come on Fall Town Meeting for that. But, this, this pay plan that we're referring to is the Recreation Seasonal Plan, it's the non-union managerial people, your executive pay plan, for another use of words, and then, the seasonal folks and part-time. So, we have part-time inspectors on there, the DPW seasonal recreation and the like, and then, the library pages and student officers for police. So, those are the non-represented people that are included in there. And each, across the board, and consistent with our pattern in collective bargaining, has been a 2% increase.
So, Articles Seven, Article Eight, and Article Nine, all speak to new union contracts, which were all, are all sustainable with, with our funding, funding goals in place. The, just to highlight a couple of the, the key points in the fire contract, the fire contract, they actually offer an opportunity to do some reorganization, to create a, a new assistant or a.
Administrative captain.
Administrative captain, which will actually help in, in handling a lot of the major administrative duties that are not being handed, are being pushed in, in many different directions down to the captain levels.
Speaks to your point, Bill, about, you know, the leanness of administrative staffs. It's not just in the usual places, it's in most administrative staffs, including fire.
And the opportunity presented itself by, because we've had a good, sustainable amount of money in the, in the ambulance funds, which actually helps, which is where a lot of the work comes from, and the, and responses is in the medical, medical area. So, that, that allows the opportunity to, to pay for those changes in that, in that regard. And then, the dispatcher contract, this is a brand-new contract. Mary Beth, do you want to just speak to that?
Sure. The dispatcher contract, it was our first year with this group, using, we, we used pretty much the basis as the Personnel Bylaw, which this group was represented by before. We did a one-year contract, because quite often in first years, you want to work out some kinks and, and not do too long of a contract. But, it pretty much mirrors the Personnel Bylaw with some exceptions. There's a defining of a probationary period for dispatchers and training. We have, there's no agency fee negotiated into this contract with this, which is a little bit unique, but it's also a trend. There's some restrictions about, because it is such a high importance position, this limit on who, how many people can take time off, because you want to have experienced people sitting in those seats. And we negotiated down the actual sick time. It's 1.75 days. It's less than with Personnel Bylaw use. And, and for vacation and shift bidding, they do seniority. So, it was a very easy contract. I think we only had three or four meetings. We look forward to sitting down with this group again. They were a pleasure to deal with, and that was it. Again, it's a one-year contract for 2%.
And highway and water was, was a pretty routine approach, too. There wasn't a lot of major changes in that contract as well. Again, we're looking at 2% pay increases contained in that, which is consistent with what our ability to pay.
On the, not, not to be regressive, but on the fire contract, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't state that with this incremental funding commitment from ambulance receipts to fund this reorganization, the fire department was very agreeable to come back to the bargaining table if our ambulance receipts should fall below a certain level, or whether the overtime dollars actually exceed a certain level. So, so the town has built in some protections with the great cooperation of, of the fire, fire bargaining team.
Right. I have to tell you, I was really very much impressed by, by the, the work of the, of the fire department and the fire union in this case, where they were very open and, and progressive in their thinking, and came up with some great ideas, which, which really made a lot of sense from our perspective, and, and so, we were able to reach an agreement in a relatively short period of time, which was pretty, pretty unusual in this, in this day and age, to see that happen.
Excellent process.
I've negotiated a lot of contracts in my career, and this was probably the most collaborative, refreshing one that I've ever done.
It's great to see that.
Yeah. It was great.
Definitely enjoyed that one.
A lot of kudos to the fire bargaining team.
So, Article 10 is the operating budget adjustments for fiscal 2015, which is the current fiscal year we are in, which will end on June 30th. Randy, you want to just mention a few things?
Sure. Usually, we don't have too many adjustments to the current budget, but we have two adjustments this year, which are actually good news. One is to the inspections Department, part-time inspector salaries. We need an adjustment of $100,000. Sounds like a lot, but the reality is, is that money is already in, in the town's coffers, already been received for work that, that has been done. So, what this indicates is a pickup in, in commercial activity within the town, fees that are being paid, and we, the town will actually receive an incremental $50,000 beyond this, because of the, the nature of how this works. Two-thirds of the pay to the inspector, and to the part-time inspector, and the other third to the town. So, this is good news. It indicates, it's a leading indicator for increased commercial development activity in the town, and it's coming from the local receipts. There's no new money here, other than the, the existing receipts that have already been collected. And then, veterans' expense, also, I consider this a good news story. Again, as we mentioned earlier, the Veterans Director has found a significant amount of eligible veterans able to receive benefits, and so, he's at a run rate that's beyond his budget of about $75,000. And again, the town will receive back 75% of that in, in the next year. So, this is an adjustment, you know, to his budget, so we can pay these benefits to these veterans, and again, funded from within existing budgetary resources, where we had some excess in two other line items.
All right. Thank you. And then, Article 11 goes to capital budget adjustments for fiscal 2015.
Sure.
And those are similar type of situations?
Similar, other than, there's, there's no new, no new money, is actually, there's some money being turned back. So, you can't have operating budget adjustments without capital budgeting adjustments.
That's right.
So, there were three capital budgets that just need some minor tweaking. One was for Conservation, 89 North Street, is a property that, that the Conservation Department owns and manages, and they were looking to, the Conservation Department was looking to do some renovations for that, but it was determined to not be salvageable before any repairs were made, and so, now, it'll be demolished. And so, they would like to rededicate these funds of 16,500 that was budgeted in last year's capital budget, towards another property they own that, that needs some renovation, which is 120 Spring Street. So, that's just reallocating, reallocating the funds. In the Water Department, there was a million dollars budgeted for the renovation of the Hill Street Water Tank, which is, that rehabilitation's currently underway. And the DPW Director, Roger Hill, has engaged in, in a great approach to this. It's a managed rehabilitation for, I believe, over 20 years, and the costs of the town are not a million dollars initially, it's actually 690,000. So, there's 310,000 that was appropriated last year, which now can be turned back to fund balance in the water enterprise. So, that's the appropriate thing to do, is to turn it back, so they can fund the annual ongoing lower maintenance, maintenance fees. So, it's a turnback. And on the historical commission side, there was 175,000 that was appropriated for renovation to Memorial Hall, but the way that we brought forward that capital budget was in its component pieces, and we had dollars associated with each component, but the bids are coming in differently at the component level. So, there's no new money being asked for here, we're just being asked, we're asking to.
Greater flexibility.
Right. Greater flexibility, by allowing the, the budget to just be a, a set number, you know, 175,000 for all of the listed repairs, because they will come in differently. And again, this is one of, one of these, one of these transparency items here, where, I don't know, some communities, they might not go back and, and revote this, but in Foxborough, we're very sensitive to, this was the purpose that was stated at town meeting, this is the way it was voted, and if we're not doing it that way, we're going back to town meeting and get the authority to, to do it.
It's the right thing to do. There's no question in my mind. Article 12 is unpaid bills of prior year. This is a small amount of money. It's, it's about 1,800 for an expense that came in just after the fiscal year, that was for last fiscal year, that was actually for the previous fiscal year. So, whenever that happens, we have to actually go to town meeting to get further approval of that. So.
And the reason for that, Bill, is, is a, again, another taxpayer protection. The law is that you cannot spend current-year appropriated funds for a prior-year bill.
Right.
Certainly, in private enterprise, you can do that, but not in, in local government here. So, this is, again, respecting that we don't pay prior-year bills with current-year funds. And so, we're asking for permission to do that.
And then, Article 13 is the Department of Revolving Fund authorizations, and we have actually four of them. First is Recreation, second is Police and Fire Apparatus Utilization Revolving Fund, which we talked about a little bit earlier. The Highway Department Revolving Fund, the Conservation Rental Property Revolving Fund. Any, any, any highlights there?
These are the current standard revolving funds, so they're just reauthorizations. Otherwise, these funds would fall into local receipts, or directly into the general fund. The only thing to note here would be the Recreation Revolving Fund, spending limit is increasing slightly, because they're, they're, continue to be incredibly successful, and they're, they're pulling in more program revenues, and so, but they can't spend those revenues on their programs unless we increase the, the limit. So, it's all funds that they do collect. And a similar sort of thing for the Police and Fire Apparatus Revolving Account, which is fees they collect for the use of police and, and fire vehicles on, on private details. We built up a balance in this account, and so, that's why we're increasing the, the spending limit here, in order to be able to utilize those funds towards what they're to be used for, which is either the repair replacement of public safety vehicles.
All right. So, no, no new categories being acted on here, which is strictly just a reauthorization of existing lines that, that are already there.
Exactly.
Article 14, the Qualified OPEB Trust, which is, again, a major issue and undertaking that this town should be commended for, and not every town in Massachusetts is actually doing. So, maybe you just want to talk about that briefly?
Sure. The, the good news is, is that, you know, that the town several years ago has recognized this liability for retiree health benefits, and we continue to fund this liability annually at an increasing level, in order to ultimately achieve funding at what's called the annual required contribution rate, which, based on the last actuarial study, were there, but of course, that changes, you know, year to year. So, there's 700,000 being asked to be, to fund the OPEB Trust, as it's called, from meals tax revenue, which is the Board's, Board of Selectmen's policy decision to use meals tax money for either funding this liability or towards roads, and we've been consistent with that. And then, the Water and Sewer Enterprises, because their employees are also ultimately entitled to retiree health benefits, they contribute in as well, and their contribution is 64,000, which is in line with, with the employee obligations that we have there. So, I'm, I'm really pleased with the progress that, that we're making here, and it sounds like there are some exciting opportunities on the horizon to join in a. there are some exciting opportunities on the horizon to join in a sort of a regional trust program managed, you know, nationally by a national bank, one of the fifth-largest banks. We're exploring that, which may yield some more savings and opportunities for the town.
That's great.
Best investment could be a good next future step.
Exactly. And possibly, the thing that also excited me is the actuarial studies might be included in the normal fees that they charge, which is less than what we're currently paying. So, a lot of good developments here.
Yeah, that's a great thing for the town to be proud of, because it's, I said, a lot of towns that aren't even addressing, cities aren't even addressing that. But I will tell you that if the town is contemplating an increase in its bond rating, that that's absolutely a major consideration by the bond rating agencies. So, we are going to focus on that over the next year and hopefully, look towards, looking towards that AAA rating status. So, that's going to be one of our...
That would be fantastic.
Ongoing goals. Expending of the highway funds, this is basically an authorization for the town manager and the Public Works, to expand highway money that we received, so-called Chapter 9 money from the state. And this goes along with the funding that we provide locally through the meals tax to improve our road program, which, as we know, has already been noted, on many occasions has been highly successful. The stabilization fund for the southeastern regional school is something that's going to be talked about, actually, this week at the selectmen's meeting. To present that, that presentation will be the southeastern regional school staff will be at our meeting to create a stabilization fund, and that's for Article 16. And just briefly, that it's an opportunity to create sort of a savings, local savings account for the, for the regional schools, so in the event of a major emergency or situation requiring emergency funding.
Right. There's no, there's no ask for incremental funding for this. This is because of the nature of regional school, they need to request the permission to establish a stabilization fund like Foxborough itself has from all of the participating communities, and that's the prudent thing to do for them, to be saving money in stabilization for these, these long-range events.
And Article 17 is an article dealing with the publishing of the town warrant. Mary Beth, you want to talk about that?
Sure. This basically gives the selectmen flexibility to, in the event that it's a very long warrant, like you might recall, the fall special town meeting had a 32-page signed bylaw, one, just one article was 32 pages. So, this gives us the flexibility to post a link to the town warrant on the webpage rather than publishing in the newspaper, and to make them available at town meeting. So, just so there's no confusion, this year's warrant is published in the newspaper, but it gives you the flexibility so that you're not spending, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to publish a warrant article if it's multiple pages. So, and it's kind of keeping up with technology.
Well, it's actually, it can be stored online, which is where you can actually pull it up and you reference it online, whereas it can be more difficult to do that sometimes with newspapers. It's not easiest to find that stuff.
And as always, there's good old-fashioned paper copies available at town hall.
So, always maintain those as well. Articles 18, 19, 20, and 21, I believe, are all planning board articles, and let me just give you, I had a brief summary put together on those articles, and this is something that actually was handed out, is prepared by the planning board, and it says, Article 1, the first Article 18 was, is the open space and residential development update, and this is Article Updates the Town's Open Space Residential Development or Residential Cluster Bylaw. It permits the number of homes that can be built in a compliant and conventional subdivision to be built in a slightly small lot, and the excess land be devoted to any of the following conservation, recreation, historic preservation, water, water protection, stormwater management, agricultural, horticultural, and forestry. Principal changes are the elimination of the buffer between the OSID and adjacent single-family homes, small initial parcel size, and clear approval criteria for the planning board for its use. It reflects several decades of updates in conservation subdivision design and is based on an extensive and detailed review of our bylaw by an expert in the field. And the planning board has voted 5 to 0 to recommend this to town meeting. And the floodplain map update was, this article appeared a couple of map references in our current bylaw, and reflects the new maps for the Taunton River Basin, a small part of which was located in Foxborough. Adopting this change is required to retain eligibility for federal flood insurance, and the board, planning board again voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this. And both, the next two are new subdivision roads. Articles 20 and 21 are, McNamara Way is to be accepted as a public way, again, voted by unanimous vote of the planning board to accept. And except Mitchellmore Way, which is a public way in the town of Foxborough, again, by a 5 to 0 vote to accept that road. So, those roads will become public ways, we'll add those to the list of our Chapter 90 eligible roads. So, therefore, it actually means actually more money for the town in the long-term over that, that piece of legislation that we're, that we're looking at. So, we now go to Articles 22, which, if you give me a second here to get through the document, speaks to, 22 is to see if the town will vote to, after Board of Selectmen, to acquire by gift, purchase eminent domain, apostle of land, and this one, this is actually a relatively small action, but it's important, it does require town meeting action, because the only way that the town can actually acquire land by eminent domain is through authorization by town meeting, which then authorizes the Board of Selectmen to take such action. But in this particular case, where it's just a, it's just a right-of-way layout that the power companies are actually working on, and it was a piece of land that nobody could find the title to. And it was town land, it was actually something that we, in order to clean up the title, we needed to actually take this by eminent domain. So, it just, it just is a more of an administrative action, but more than anything, more than it is substantive, but it's something that's absolutely needed. And Article 23 is to see if the town will vote to follow apostles that have, so request to be incorporated into the sewer service area. So, these are various individual apostles that'll be included in the town sewer district. Again, something that required by town meeting action. And then Article 24 was one that did incur a little bit of discussion during the past few months, at least a few weeks, I should say. We actually reached an agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Water-Sewer Commissioners to, to put the authority that was originally bestowed upon the Board of Water-Sewer Commissioners and was actually removed, I don't think intentionally, in 2013. It was, it was an action that was trying to provide additional authority to the town manager over the personnel in the department, and intend, and unintentionally provided additional authority to actually, by the Board of Selectmen, with authority over the entire operation. So, what the Board of Selectmen has agreed to do is certainly to support the article here by the Water-Sewer Commission to restore that authority, with the one exception, and this was the one that required a little bit of debate, is that the sale of sewer, sewer capacity would have to be required, a secondary vote by the Board of Selectmen in order to make that happen. So, this, this actually provided a second level of authority, given the fact that there was quite a bit of discussion about that's such a major policy consideration.
Outside town.
Selling capacity outside the borders of the community, that it required a secondary level of approval. And so, both boards have agreed to support each other on that measure, and therefore, that is now before the Board for town meeting for the consideration. So, that, ladies and gentlemen, concludes the warrant for this year's town meeting. It's, like I said, 24 articles. We managed to get through, hopefully, without, we certainly want to respond to any of the many conversations or questions that folks have about this. The fact that we're doing the show ahead of time will provide an opportunity for people to call town hall if they have questions about it, and we'll certainly, residents will certainly call us, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. That certainly will, will help with the, with the meeting, the discussion of the town meeting. So, and then finally, last and finally, I just want to say thanks to all of, both of you for allowing me to conclude my first year as town meeting, town manager here in this community. I'm actually very, very pleased to have been here, and I'm looking to, forward to a very long and enjoyable tenure here. It's been, it's been very interesting. Folks here have been terrific, really enjoy working with the staff members here, the employees, the board members, the Board of Selectmen has been great. It's been great working with the residents of the community and the business community for that matter, it's been, it's been very enjoyable.
It's been a privilege. Thanks for coming to Foxborough, Bill.
No, I appreciate it, appreciate it.
And you too, Mary Beth.
Thanks to both of you for allowing you to be here as well. So, thanks, everyone. This concludes this version of the Ask Bill Keegan Show. We will, we'll be back next month with another interesting topic that we certainly will dig our, dig our teeth into, and hopefully, you'll be able to join us at that time. But then, see you next time. Thank you.